Right at 7:00, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I would like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and our agenda is approved. I'll just make a note tonight before we move into open forum. I understand there are a number of you in the room that are interested in the topic of 11th Avenue and Forest Road. We have two opportunities for public input tonight. The first would be during open forum, which is going to be our next agenda item. And then also, we do have a public hearing planned on the topic of the prohibition of the sale of cannabis within the city of Forest Lake. So if you are here and are interested in speaking tonight, open forum is your opportunity to do so. There is a signup sheet over on the side. If you've already signed in, great. If you haven't yet signed in, you're welcome to do so. When we get to the end of the signup list, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, we will also keep open forum open for anyone else that would like to speak. But if you want to have your input heard this evening, that is your best format unless you want to talk specifically on the cannabis ordinance that is planned on the agenda. With that, we will open up open forum. Again, open forum is any interested party's opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. It is an item on every agenda, and so we welcome you here. We are interested in hearing what you have to say. We'll hold on for the signup sheet here in just a moment. Thank you, Karen. As I call your name, if you could, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours. To start, is it Steve? Is it Creppers?
Oh, Steve is here for the item...
Oh, okay.
Seven, or 7C on the agenda.
And Steve, did you have feedback for council as part of open forum?
No.
All right. We'll move on to... Is it Phil Becker? Could come to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good. My name is Philip Becker. I live at 5879 220th Street North. That's actually on the south half of 11th. And I live right on the corner of 11th and Forest Road. So this is going to impact me greatly. I do not understand why we have to spend this much money to put in such complicated stuff when there's some great ideas in this. Granted, at times, it's hard to turn left out of my driveway. I face on 11th. But you're going to make it impossible if you put in this. Then some other folks are going to have some real difficulties. The ability to turn in and out of Forest Road is also... It's basically incomprehensible to me why it has to be so expensive and complicated looking. One of the biggest issues I've seen, and I've lived on that corner for 19 years now, is the speed limit sign going west on 11th. As soon as you turn at the stoplights, there's 40 miles an hour. I'll guarantee you, there's people going past my place at over 50. Why not put a stop sign or a stoplight in there at Forest and 11th and put slower speed limit signs up? I mean, a little common sense here would go a long ways. We don't have to spend all this money and make it difficult for people to get in and out of Forest Road, or me to get in and out of my driveway. There's a lot simpler solutions than what I see on this piece of paper. It's rather ridiculous to me. But then again, this impacts me probably more than anybody else in this room, except for the folks that live over here in this neighborhood. I'm thinking of words and biting my tongue at the same time because, to keep this civil, I'm working on it. But frankly, the amount of money, the time, and difficulty that's going to be spent and forced on people for this, I don't see any benefit in it. A raised median, we don't need that. Throw in a stoplight, throw in a stop sign, lower the speed limit, put a sidewalk up for the pedestrians. We don't need to make it this complicated and this expensive. In the 19 years that I've lived there, there's only been three or four accidents. And believe me, I hear them. So I don't see the necessity of all this complicated rerouting of traffic and happy spending on roundabouts and what have you. So with that, I've said my piece. I don't think that this proposal is going to work. I frankly think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. And with that, I've got to go back to work. Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you for being here. For our... We have Jim... Is it Lickte?
Yep. Hello.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Hi. Jim Lickte, 9469 North Shore Trail North, Forest Lake. I want to talk about the weed harvester. I'm right next to that boat launch where it's docked, and it's interrupted my life greatly. It's ruined weekends with my grandkids multiple times, and nothing's been done about it. I don't think the city should be doing that anymore, especially not five days a week. And I don't think it should be docked next to my house because that harvester has taken off from there five times a day and just leaving weeds out to my... into my dock that I can't control. I don't have a nice beach, haven't had it. I have two compost bins that I have to fill up weekly, and that's not even enough sometimes. And I can't keep up, nor can I predict when it's going to be so bad that I can't have my kids over. And I want that to be heard. I have called multiple times to you, Mayor, and asked for a return phone call and never received it. I finally emailed everybody, and I got a response from everyone but you. Don't understand why. Maybe the job's too much for you, that you can't contact the public? Maybe you need to resign. But I would appreciate it if you guys would greatly look into that weed harvesting and what effects it has on the North Shore. Drive it. Look at people's shorelines and see what damage it is. Because the wind mostly goes that direction, and that's the greatest impact of beaches you're going to see. And I understand that boats do leave weeds, but not like the weed harvester. It's just unreal, and it's not fair. It's ruining my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next this evening, we have Carl Graff.
I'm Carl Graff. I've lived on the road down here for... since 1965, and then it was mud. So was 11th Avenue. So I've watched them grow. The new proposal from Washington County, their engineering staff, is totally unacceptable to the people that live in the neighborhood. And Sam's son is going to live there very soon. And Sam, have you received any notices about what's going on in your family?
Well, I know what's going on with Washington County. That answers your question.
Okay. There's two issues up front. One is the design is totally unacceptable because Highway 97 is being blocked off with a barricade. If you put a barricade here, we have no way in or out. This is the east side of Clear Lake. As a neighborhood, we can't accept it. And I think we'll go to great extremes to stop it. We have, in some sort of haphazard manner, had some conversations with the county. They're not useful. They're not going anyplace. I don't know. I get sort of soft mush. Oh, we... Sorry about your problem. Okay. Our money. I believe the county has spent over $1 million over the past couple of years doing this away. As an engineer, I was a very good one at the top. This design is totally unacceptable. It is substandard. I'm willing to challenge anybody on the issues. It doesn't cut it. You don't put a barricade up. And in your handout, you will see some of the input data. This is the busiest part of the road, yet on the other parts, you put stop signs, roundabouts in. And it turns out that the engineer could not solve the problem for this stretch, so it appears he put a barricade in. We know of no other reason why. And if you go down and look at the things, there are many other options that can be done. Stoplights, you name it. Also, no data has been collected that I'm aware of that says car number, speeds, and things like that. I don't know how we can spend that much money on a faulty engineering process with no data. It's unreal what's happening, and no one wants to stop it. We can't keep spending money, and you're going to be putting more money into it. Please don't put any money into it. Now, look at all the different configurations. We have some detailed sketches where we're... Just put them together. Wild ideas, how you could reroute things, how you could keep it simple. Those things have not been handed out to you. Printing is getting to be expensive. If you like them, I'll get them for you. There's a way of going around connecting 4th Avenue. You might run up around the bridge. There's a lot of wetland in there to watch for. It drains in, of course, to our Forest Lake. There's no mechanism now to contain the water, the runoff. So we're getting raw water in the lake. More bad news for you come later is, boy, have we got millfoil going in the last few weeks. Millfoil is back. So we would really like you to slow the process down. Oh, today was the cutoff day for inputs for the county. And I don't know if there are any county representatives here? Oh, friend. Okay. Good to see you. Glad you got here. Maybe you could get his input after I speak, what they've decided as of tonight. So a suggestion is, you have a very good city engineer and a very strong company, extremely good. Let him take a look at this. I hate for us to spend our money on something that they should be doing, but let him look at it for a top-level design. And we need to talk about this. Please have more open meetings and include us. Expand the mailing list. I officially have never heard of it. It was only by other people that came and told me. So let's just take a breath, get our engineer involved, let him look at it, and then at some time, we could reconvene. But tell the people in the neighborhood, they're not too happy. And start over fresh. Put some new designs out and see if we can't come up with something that does not block the road for us so we can go in and out of our neighborhood and does not drive us into bankruptcy. Wild idea. The simplest thing is, hey, how about just plain stop sign with a flashing light on top? I mean, we're really getting complex here. And let's have some traffic studies on the road. I came here tonight. I didn't wait. I had to wait for three cars. I shouldn't wait that long. That's how long a good, complete stop takes. Do we have a road that needs all of that work right now when money is so tight? So I'm really requesting tonight that you slow this thing down, get our engineer involved, and work with the county on it. Communicate with us. We'd like to hear from you. I think all of us here that are involved would like to know what's happening and not find out from some neighbor that says, oh, do you know what's happening? They're building a barricade. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next on open forum, is it Perry McGowan? Did I say your name correctly? No.
Yeah, you said it just fine. Perry McGowan, 21900 Forest Road.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm a next-door neighbor, I guess, to Phil Becker, who spoke initially. I was pretty surprised and disappointed to see the county mailing come out and to see what was on the county mailing for the 11th Avenue Road project. Felt like there was a lot of additions there that were not good for me, not good for my neighbors like Phil, and not good for the community along Forest Road and Fondant. And so I talked with those people. There's about 95 homes in the community on East Clear Lake that accesses via Forest Road. There's also additional population of people on Lower Fondant that connects to 97, and Ashback Point folks, and some of those people that also use Forest Road regularly. There's also people here along 11th Avenue that front on 11th Avenue, and they as well use Forest Road to get home. If they come up Forest Road after this plan, they can't turn left to get home. They're forced to go right to Highway 61. And of course, there's people in the apartment buildings, and they're also users of this. So there's a lot of people affected by it. I've spoken to most of the people in the Forest Road neighborhood. There's 95 or so homes, and I've talked with most of those folks. I would say there's some common themes that come from those conversations of what people have seen in the county's proposal. The first is that the people want to continue to see left turns into and out of Forest Road from 11th Avenue. People also want to be able to see the people who live on 11th Avenue and have driveways onto 11th Avenue, be able to make the same left turns as they do today. We think that there's quite a lot of county property, city property, public property in the vicinity, so there shouldn't be any need for private condemnations for whatever project emerges. There's a theme among the residents that they'd like to see the speed reduced on 11th Avenue, as Phil mentioned earlier. It is lower, I believe, on the east side of 61, and I think it's lower on the west side of the freeway. And to the extent that the project is motivated by safety, one of the easiest things for safety is to bring the speed limit down. And frankly, nobody's going to care that much if they're going 20 miles an hour on that strip or 80 miles an hour on that strip because it's only seven blocks long. It's not a make or break deal. So overall, the message is from the community, let's revise this project, particularly the design elements between Centennial Drive and 12th, which is the cross street to Target and Walmart.
Very good.
Yeah. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you for your feedback. Next, we have Sheila Smith. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sheila Smith. I live at 21900 Forest Road North with Perry McGowan. And I think from everyone else's comments, you've already heard that our neighborhood is blocked every direction, on one side by Clear Lake, on the other side by the trail. On the north is the only way we can get out that way. On the south is the only way we can get out that way. So I'm not going to go into that. But what I did want to touch on was pedestrian safety at 11th and Forest Road North. I have two wiener dogs, and we walk every day a couple times. And our uncle lives over on 8th, and so we take a left on 11th and go down to 8th and go left into his house to go visit him. There's no sidewalk on the south side of the street, and there's no sidewalk proposed on the south side of the street. On the other side of 61, there's a sidewalk on the south side of the street all along 11th, and we walk up there a lot, too. If I was coming home from that end of the world, I would have to go... 61 is hard enough to cross because the light doesn't wait for you. You have to run. Anybody with any mobility issues is never going to make it all the way across 61, so that's pretty scary, anyway. Then you get across 61, and you're just in a ditch at Winnex. So you go through the ditch until you get to the trail. You have to go under the trail and around to get over it. But that doesn't help me because I want to go south. So I go south. My neighbor has luckily cut a path through the train side so I can get down to our houses. It's bad. It's dangerous all along the route. This new proposal would have us, if we were coming from the east, take the sidewalk, run across 61 so we don't get murdered, hit the ditch, take the ditch to the bridge, take the bridge over 61, take the new trail on the north side till we get to 8th, then run back across 11th, trying to avoid being murdered by cars to get to our uncle's house. So there kind of needs to be a sidewalk on the southern side, too, because otherwise I have to cross 61 several times for no reason. So I think pedestrian safety has been neglected in favor of the questions of what you do with cars. So I just like to promote the idea that, yeah, there's a lot of us who walk our dogs, and even if you don't have a dog, you might take a walk. But... So I hope that gets more consideration, too. That's all. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you for being here. That is the end of... (applause) That is the end of signups, but I'm happy to take anyone else that would like to speak on this topic or any other topic as part of open forum.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I got a heads-up from Mr. Roberts that this discussion was going to be going on. Mr. Erickson, Councilmember Erickson, also contacted me. And Mayor, I left you a voice message. So I want to begin really with an apology to the people that live within the Forest Road area because, as Mr. Graff pointed out, there was not adequate notice that went out to that entire neighborhood. And I've talked to staff about that. We're going to correct that situation in the future. But in particular, when you have a neighborhood that relies heavily on the county road for an access point and then a state highway, those notices should go out in a much broader way. I want to let you know also, there were comments about your city engineer. Ryan Goodman has been your engineer for quite some time. He's been involved in this process. He's listening very well and having input into the design considerations. This is part of a process that we go to and go through with the county. And the reason I apologize is because it's the public input that helps with proper design on these roads. And nobody knows this area better than the people that drive it every day. By the way, I came from a visitation out in Winstead here this afternoon, and as I exited 35W onto 97, I then took Forest Road up. So I drove it again tonight, just to familiarize myself some more with the road and the access point. But I want to assure everyone that we are early in the design process here for this road. I personally think the design could be improved, and I've talked to our county engineer about some of those possibilities. I'm hoping to meet with you, Madam Mayor. And I know Councilmember Erickson reached out, indicated he had an interest in that and your staff, and talk about some other design options that may require, you know, more of a partnership to address some of the issues that are out there. But I want to assure everyone that we are listening. We are looking at options personally. The right in and right out at Forest Road doesn't meet my expectations either, and we'll see what we can do in the way of design options that are reasonable in cost, that meet the needs of the community here. So we'll continue to work on that, and we'll continue to have as many open houses as we need to take public input. And I will also alert our staff to this meeting and make sure that they listen to the replay of it and get some of the points that were brought up tonight as well. So thank you, Madam Mayor, council.
Thank you. And to that, to just... Thank you for being here, Commissioner Miron and all of you. To that point around kind of follow-up, I believe Washington County is planning to present to city council in a workshop for October, which is scheduled... It's tentatively on the agenda for Monday, October 16th. That is a regularly scheduled workshop topic, our regularly scheduled workshop time for council. That's a 6:30 meeting time. Again, that agenda is still tentative at this point. That is an open meeting. You are all welcome to be here. There is always open forum every meeting, and so there will be an open forum for that meeting. And then if you are just interested in following this topic overall, on our website, there is a notification to sign up for the city newsletter. If you do not get the weekly emailed city newsletter, now would be a great time to sign up for that. That comes out every week on About Friday and contains links to all of the upcoming meeting agendas. So any decision that's made here formally or any workshop where there is this item on discussion for council, that will... You will see those on those agenda items. And so if you're just kind of following what's happening at the city, that would be the way to follow the city side of it. As Commissioner Miron mentioned, there is expected to be additional county-sponsored workshops here in Forest Lake, open houses as well for additional feedback as this design progress continues. We are in the middle of that design, so your feedback is well timed, and there's plenty of project time for those considerations to be made. And Ryan, I think you had some comments as well.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, before large group does leave this evening, I wanted to definitely point out what we discussed before this, too, with that city council workshop and the Washington County coming to present at that and talk about this project specifically. And that wasn't just something that was planned. That was planned upon the responses and feedback that they received at the last... Public Open House 3. So we'll have some individual meetings at a staff level leading up to that, but that's why that's on that agenda now for the October 16th meeting. I also want to point out, it speaks volumes that the commissioner's here on behalf of Washington County, so, you know, that hopefully carries some weight with the residents that are in the audience tonight and more confidence in the project where we'll be going. We've definitely got a lot of work to do. And also note that that project's not planned for construction until 2026. That doesn't mean it's going to happen in '26, and it could get pushed out a year. Who knows, right? But right now, the earliest it would happen would be 2026. So definitely a lot of time between then and now. So... And the other thing... So, and the other thing, just to note, the project will require municipal consent. So that would require you guys to vote in favor of the project before the project would even pursue to final design and all that, too. So there's other things I wanted to bring up and note for you guys. If you got any other questions, feel free to ask.
Very good. Council, just take a pause. We've heard a lot of feedback tonight. Any other specific questions for Ryan or any other questions, I guess, for staff overall?
No specific questions.
All right. We do have a full agenda this evening. You are all welcome to stay for that full agenda if you are here specifically for this topic. I also understand you may have other plans for the evening. So thank you for being here. Council will pause for just a moment.
I just want to follow up. I know you guys all saw my email. I'm gonna send pictures to get to the most likely. That might help as well.
Thanks, Jim.
If we could have you have your conversations in the hallway, that would be great. We are going to proceed with our agenda. Council, for your consideration tonight is consent agenda items 6A through 6F. Open to a motion or any changes?
I move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And our consent agenda is approved. Next item this evening is regular agenda item 7A, which is consideration of Resolution 9112302. And Chief Newman, I believe you're walking us through this.
Mayor, members of the council, we received a generous donation for $100 from the Forest Lake Lions. The donation will be used to fund fire prevention activities. Staff recommendation is accept the donation with gratitude.
Thank you, Chief. I would move council approve Resolution 9112302 with gratitude. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And resolution is approved. Next item is item 7B, consideration of ordinance 728, and this will include a public hearing. Amanda, are you walking us through this?
Yes, Your Honor. So in the packet is a memo outlining what we had discussed at a previous council meeting regarding an interim ordinance, also known as a moratorium, that will be prohibiting the expansion of or creation of new uses related to cannabis businesses. And this, right, the moratorium in front of you goes through January of 2025, which is allowed under the cannabis laws that were passed this last year by the legislature. The moratorium also rescinds the previous moratorium that is currently in effect. That was the moratorium that council voted on and passed after the 2022 cannabis legislation. That was also called like the Edibles, Edibles Act. So in front of you tonight is the ordinance for your consideration. We do need to have a public hearing. That is required under the statute to consider. And then after that, if you could please consider ordinance number 728, looking for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda. Any, before we open up public hearing, council, any questions for Amanda or any member of staff on this topic?
Just to clarify, this isn't gonna impact any existing businesses that are operating currently in the city under the current laws, correct?
So if you are a cannabis-related business that opened prior to the moratorium from the 2022 edible laws, you are allowed to continue. You may not expand your business. Then if you're a new business, obviously you cannot open.
But there isn't any organization that's allowing licenses for these new businesses either, correct?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Council, Councilmember Erickson, correct. So in the 2023 legislation that the state passed, they created this new Office of Cannabis Management that requires licensing through the state. That's new. That licensing won't be available until January of 2025, hence the reason for them allowing these moratoriums. They are sort of a belt and suspenders approach because absent a license, technically, you're not supposed to open. But there can be some sort of issues around grandfather rights and some various things, which is why we're recommending, and most cities are recommending, a moratorium.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for those clarifications. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on the topic of ordinance 728, please come forward now. We'll open the public hearing.
Karen Morehead, 943 Southeast 12th Avenue. I'm here at kind of a loss because the gal that's in charge of the speak consortium that's going on, there's a grant that was given to Forest Lake to spread the word about young people that are not using drugs, alcohol, whatever. And they asked me to come and look at, they're not here.
But you are.
I'm not about to speak for the group, but I will speak on a personal level that I would be very much in favor of temporarily prohibiting and again, allowing the city council and your staff to really make it clear to the public about what we're talking about. They don't get it. I know it's hard for communication. You don't know what they read and what they see and all that kind of stuff. But I think temporarily prohibiting would give you a chance to try again, to get the word out and those of us who are in the consortium to put in some definite ideas. So this will be my own personal opinion that I'm, I'm for, for temporarily prohibiting it. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Give just a few more moments. And before we close public hearing, is there anybody else that would like to speak on ordinance 728? Hearing none, we will bring, close the public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Just note, for the record, this topic has been a topic of a number of discussions already at the council level related to our consideration of the new cannabis laws and regulations and impact here on Forest Lake. And so if it seems our, our questions and our discussion is rather limited, it has been fairly vetted in previous meetings. Any, before, before we open up for a motion, any other topics or considerations on this? Hearing none. I'm open for a motion if anyone's ready.
I believe this proposed ordinance is gonna give us some breathing room so we can get this thing figured out. So therefore, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 728, an interim ordinance temporarily prohibiting the establishment of new users or the expansion of existing uses related to cannabis businesses.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. All right. We are moving on to 7C, which is a series of resolutions and, and in ordinance related to Fenway Investments LLC, the Headwaters Village, PID 2903221120017. Abby, do you want to introduce kind of concept in whole and then we'll take section by section? There's a, a resolution first, an ordinance, and then two follow-up resolutions.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Mayor Bean, members of the council, just a moment. Karen, could you pull up the screen for me, please? Thank you. So the council may remember in May of this year, you received a concept PUD consideration for the last remaining undeveloped outlot in Headwaters Village. This is an outdated aerial where you might not see Suite Living and Bridge Academy, both that have been constructed since this 22 aerial was taken. I think even Fitzchild Blast was under construction. Regardless, last remaining undeveloped lot in Headwaters Village has been proposed for a multi-use, a multi-unit apartment building. In May, you saw this and it was 82 units was proposed at that time. Both the Planning Commission and the City Council were favorable to amending the PUD to allow for this building to go into this location. So in August, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the consideration of a number of actions that have to occur for this to be able to move forward. In addition to that PUD amendment that's before you, a zoning ordinance map amendment that changes that to allow for that multiple-family building, a final plat, and that's just to replat the outlot. It was platted as an outlot. Replat it as a buildable site. The final PUD and site plan approval. Planning Commission did act on that site plan approval. They had granted conditional approval based on all of these other things to come forward and also made recommendation to approve the PUD, the PUD amendment, the ordinance amendment. So there's a whole litany of things that the Planning Commission has said, hey, council, this is legit with the code and all the things. They've kind of done that dirty work for you. But I'm gonna run through it all for you and those watching at home, so everybody knows what's going on. So overall, the development site located off of Headwaters Parkway and Highway 61 is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan right now is guiding that property for mixed use. Mixed use requires 50% residential. I think that that was probably something that was a little bit more of a shock to many of the policymakers. We really had wanted to see more of that neighborhood commercial design through here. The comprehensive plan amendment that's proposed is consist, or the zoning ordinance amendment that's proposed is consistent with that comprehensive plan. The guidance for the comprehensive plan for that mixed use really wins out in this circumstance. Headwaters Village PUD amendment, again, that village core. There's areas of that original plan that suggests multifamily would be allowed. It's not really the most clear that this specific site would be allowed for multifamily. So we're just amending that PUD to say the multifamily use is allowed in this, on this site. All of that kind of really paves way for this 71-unit apartment complex by keepers. They're proposing, again, everything that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. But that zoning map amendment that I mentioned earlier is consistent with what would be allowed in the district. The final plat is one of those unique things in here. Typically, when you subdivide a property, if there's a piece of land that isn't gonna be built on right now, we plat it as an outlot for that future development. And so we're just changing that existing Headwaters Village Third Edition Outlet A into Lot 1, Block 1, Village Fourth Edition. It's, it's a, it's just one of those kind of customary steps that we have to kind of go through in order to make development occur. Public infrastructure improvements, all the, most of the infrastructure is in and around the site. The roads are built, the utilities are in. There are some public facilities, sidewalks that will be located, streetlights. But for the most part, it, the infrastructure's there. No trails are being proposed, no parklands being proposed. But as part of our 2014 Master Parks Plan, we did find that there is a need for more parkland. However, that parkland isn't really guided in this area. Therefore, they have, are proposing parkland dedication, which would be a cash fee in lieu of that parkland dedication. That would be going then to our Capital Parks Plan that can help us put in some of those improvements. The staff analysis and all this, there's some comments from both the engineer, the fire department. The development team has started to work towards meeting those conditions. Many of those conditions of approval will need to be met before the release of a building permit. Keepers isn't looking to build this building until the spring of next year. They're gonna hit the ground running right when the ground starts thawing. So they're well ahead, I think, in terms of the planning for the development. We held a neighborhood meeting right here at City Hall, August 9th. Nobody came out. Nobody spoke at the public hearing at the Planning Commission level. Seems that there's a good fit for this neighborhood and no opposition. So staff does find, and the Planning Commission found, that this conforms to the standards and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan, the zoning code. So there's a series of recommendations and it is kind of specific order. They do come out, page six of the staff report, and forgive me, I don't know the name of the, or the number in the packet, but I can find that. So staff does recommend moving to approve the three resolutions and the ordinance. And if you want, we can walk specifically through those. I'll leave that up to you. I'm available to ask questions. Steve Keepers here, if you have any questions of him. That's it.
Thank you, Abby. Before we consider the individual resolutions and the ordinance involved in the packet, maybe let's just start with overall questions, either for Abby or, or staff overall or the project team? Any questions? Discussion points? I guess, just to kick us off, one of my, one of the points I wanted to clarify, this is the last parcel of this, fill in the blank. Is it the, is it the development?
It's really, I mean, so this is the final master PUD for Liberty Vill, excuse me, Headwater Village. This is Fenway Avenue and Park, and Headwaters Parkway. Everything to really to the east or to the west here is, you know, some of it's been partially developed as single-family. But really with Headwaters, we were looking at that athletic complex, some individual residential, and then really honing in on that kind of village core area. The village core area contemplated the retail transit, county service center, library, community center, multifamily housing, senior needs. We really, other than maybe that retail we were hoping for, hit the mark on this. This is the last property to be developed in that neighborhood heart area, that village core area that we talked about.
A good segue for just an overall comment. I continue to hear concern and I have concerns of myself about being perhaps overbuilt in multifamily residential, especially market rate multifamily residential, actually, maybe all, all above. I'm happy to support this this evening because we have, it, it fits with what's already in kind of that, that plan that was put together years ago. But I just, I, my, we have high den, we have more and more density of these types of projects. And so again, not so much a criticism of the existing project. I just want to start putting out some warning signs. I am concerned of our overall density overall. So, I, more of an item for future consideration, but want, just feel the need to get that on the record.
Are there questions or comments related to this project or the items before us?
Considering that lot and this surrounding area, I mean, I think it fits well. I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree entirely with that density issue. But I mean, for the lots that's there, that is there, I can't imagine a better use for it.
Correct. Understood. Not hearing other questions or discussion points, if we wanted to move into the resolution portion, I am open for, open for any motions if anyone's ready. The first item would be the consideration of the planned unit development.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 09112303, approving the proposed plat amendment.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item for our consideration is ordinance 729, which is the zoning ordinance map amendment, required as part of, part of the overall project. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 729, the zoning ordinance map amendment related to this project.
Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Brings us to resolution. Is there a motion for resolution on the final plat?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept, approve Resolution 09112304, final plat for Headwaters Village.
Very good. Is, motion, I'll second. Any discussion? We have a motion and a discussion here, or motion, motion and a second. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And does anyone have a, a motion for final resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 09112305, resolution approving final plan for PUD for the plan for PUD for the Headwaters Village, Fourth Edition Planned Unit Development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. That ends our planned action agenda for this evening. We are going to move into a discussion or workshop session related to a budget update. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. This is a working session and an extension of a series of working sessions we have done on the topic of the budget this year. Any items that we discussed tonight that will require official action will come forward at a future meeting on an action item agenda. And I've asked in particular that we supplement tonight with just an overall budget update, but then also doing additional detail specific into the fire department budget. Chief has been so kind to present some details to the Joint Fire Board that Councilmember Erickson and myself have had the opportunity to hear, but I think it's important that council kind of get that additional detail overall, as it is one of the important parts of tonight's, or the budget that's being proposed for 2024. With that, Kevin, you want to get us kicked off and toss it over to Chief whenever you're ready?
Mayor, Chief is actually going to kick us off to begin with.
Perfect.
And then, once he's finished going over the fire department wages, I'll go on to my portion.
Excellent. Chief, floor is yours.
Right. Mayor and members of the council, as part of our proposed 2024 fire department budget, we are looking for a wage increase for paid-on-call firefighters. To give you a little background, over the last five years, we've seen a, basically a crisis for being able to hire and retain part-time firefighters, not only in the metro, but outstate and across the United States. And a lot of reasons that this is happening, some of it's just increased commitment in daily life, people are busier. Especially if you've got kids and sports, that time that you had free to be in a fire department, that just time isn't there as much. Low wages, no healthcare in the paid-on-call fire service. Volunteerism is just dying. I'm a member of the Lions, and at 52, I'm one of the youngest members on the team. And so, we're just not seeing that younger group stepping up to volunteer for these type of activities like they have in the past. A lot of departments around us, because they've had such a difficult time retaining or recruiting members, are now starting to move to that full-time staffing model. Just in Washington County, Cottage Grove, Woodbury, Oakdale have transitioned from paid-on-call fire staffing to full-time models. White Bear Lake, Stillwater, Lake Elmo, Mata Medei. White Bear Lake has actually just transitioned to full-time, but Stillwater, Lake Elmo, and Mata Medei is transitioning to that full-time paid-on-call combination departments. And even closer to Forest Lake, Center Real Circle, Pines and Lake, Lino Lakes have gone into the duty crew model, which is a model where you've got daytime staffing plus paid-on-call staffing. Usually, that's a precursor for a department that's going to eventually become full-time, because those models just haven't worked in Minnesota over time. So the good news is Forest Lake's been fairly immune to this whole recruitment retention. Currently, we're fully staffed. I handed out a, kind of a wage history sheet, which you should have in front of you, and it reflects all the way back to 2015, and it shows the number of firefighters. Thirty-two is fully staffed. That's 31 paid-on-call and a full-time chief to make 32. So if you look at that historically, we've done a pretty good job at retention and recruitment in Forest Lake. There's the wage history from 2015 to 2025 payroll, and then average wage. The last three, or last three rows, 23, 24, and 25, I'm using estimated payroll. But that reflects what, what an average firefighter has received each year that they've been in service. So one of the issues that fire departments are having is such low wages in fire departments that guys just can't afford to do this kind of job. It becomes cost prohibitive. Even though they want to get back to the community and be a part of the team, there's a point where it just, it's, life is too expensive. And so with the wage increases, we're looking for $4 for this year, that will raise the average salary for a firefighter from $7,500 for this year to $9,010. So on average, that will increase a firefighter's wage $1,500 in the year for the average firefighter. If you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Chief, maybe you, it's on our sheet and maybe worth talking about the benchmark. So the goal has been overall, you know, increase retention or help kind of maintain retention, increase recruitment, bring up that average wage. I think we have gone through periods on a number of topics where we don't do anything for many years, and then we'll take a big jump to catch up. And rather than take that approach specific to the paid-on-call wage, the idea was brought up probably a couple of years ago. I think we're in year two of consideration of let's aim to have that firefighter wage be benchmarked at the hourly rate of a patrol officer. Again, with the goal that we are using that as the benchmark, and that kind of gives us something to adjust to, so that we're making sure that we're not getting behind, that we are compensating kind of equitably across role of public safety. And again, just trying to kind of overall maintain that, maintain that wage and stay competitive, so.
Yes, that is correct. We, we currently, for the current year, step one firefighter earns 34, 36. So even with this increase, we'd be below what a step-one new patrol officer would make. But once we get to that point where we're comparable, then looking at maybe matching that to whatever the contract is. So when patrol officer gets a 2% raise, we would raise the fire department wage 2% too. One of the other things that, you know, we've looked at is, I personally don't think the paid-on-call model's dead. Because we're fully staffed and we've, we've done the right things to retain firefighters, this is just one step that gets us closer. The alternative or the risk that, that cities are finding is paid-on-call models are less expensive to operate than a full-time department. If Forest Lake had to go to a full-time response model, we'd be looking at 1.8 to 2 million additional dollars for the budget. That's in addition to our current budget that we have now. And because we don't have, and that would be a paid-on-call, or it'd be full-time staffing with paid-on-call kind of as the backup response. But because of our proximity to other cities, in the, in the metro, it works better because you have fire departments every five miles apart. In where we're at, other than Wyoming, the closest fire departments are 10 miles away. And so if, if that paid-on-call model falls apart, and you're truly going to staff your fire department with full-time staffing without paid-on-call, you're looking at 3 to 3.5 million dollars for an annual budget. But it's comparative to what law enforcement response is.
Just some comments. I, you know, when we first got on the council here, Chief sat down and explained a lot of this to us, and this is a no-brainer. You've done a great job. This is, this is way better option, and really, if there was money, I would say go right to the 3125 next year. I mean, let's, who's $9,000, the amount of time they put in, it's, and to the service we get, it's, it's the best value in the city, probably.
Other points of feedback or questions?
Can you remind us?
It's important, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't getting lost in all of the other budget conversations we've had. Councilmember Erickson, sorry.
Chief, with the increase in wages, I think you anticipate that retention levels staying high, correct?
Correct.
With the firefighters? What, what is the cost of replacing a firefighter? What's our hard cost when one steps back and you have to recruit a new one?
So every new firefighter is around 15,000 for the first year, and then there's ongoing costs past that point. But for turnout gear, training, EMR school, the medical, the psych, basically your, your pre-hire cost, it's around 15,000 per firefighter. So we just hired four firefighters that started the first year, so that's 60,000 in, in budget. So every time we retain a firefighter for another year, it's a huge benefit and a cost savings to the city.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions, points of feedback? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Karen, can you make sure my screen's showing up? Please, thank you. Mayor's, Mayor, Mayor, Members of Council of this evening. Let me fix my screen here first. I know you like seeing my kids and all, but...
We do.
Okay, here we go. Okay. Mayor, Member of Councils in front of you this evening, this is an update on our continuing discussions for the 2024 proposed budget, continuing from our workshop that was held on August 21st. So we heard a couple of things that evening that the council wanted brought back to this discussion here. One of those being a couple of options to seeing the levy below 20%, and also seeing the levy in that 15 to 18% range. So there will be two options or scenarios that will be shown this evening. One that will show a way the city can get under 20% compared to the 22.5% that was proposed, and another option or scenario that gets us to that 15 to 18% range. So up on the screen in the first page of your packet is option one. This one gets the levy under 20%. The largest contributing factor to this is that first-line item, the equipment certificate levy. Working with our consultants and LRS and having some levy dollars that was levied in 2023, as those bonds and equipment certificates were anticipated to be issued this year, but with the delays, aren't going to be issued next year, and working with how the most effectively use that levy dollars this year to help kind of smooth out that impact in the future years, whether it's a 10-year or a 15-year bond, the staff is confident that we can cut that 243,163 from that levy. This is looked at being a 10-year equipment certificate. It does increase the amount of principal interest over the life of that equipment certificate, but it's pretty insignificant. It's about 80 or 85,000 over 10 years of increased cost. When you take that over 10 years, it's about 8,000 a year just to get that lesson that hit this year. The next line item is an increase in revenue going back through the revenues in the general fund. The staff is looking at raising some other revenues, up 45,000, thus relying on the tax levy for 45,000.
You say raising revenues, would, is that a, is that fees or?
It is mostly tied to a tenale leases. The city is in negotiations with renewing some intent lease contracts that expire at the end of '24, and based on where those are going and where those are going to settle, that's where the majority of this revenue is coming from. So that should be a pretty, pretty good number there, based on some new information we just have. And then the last line item, the decrease in the capital improvement levy of 50,000. This is needed just to get under 20%. The logic for this levy is looking at all the many needs of the cities between staffing, parks, streets, building maintenance, having a largest proposed increase in that streets, taking away 50,000 from there to get under 20% was a scenario proposed here. If you have any questions along the way, feel free to stop me, otherwise I'll just So the next page, option two, scenario two, same first two line items, the equipment certificate levy and the increase in the revenue in the general fund. But the next three line items are a little bit more of a hit to those impacts on the levy. Looking at decreasing the capital improvement levy and the park dedication proposed left from what was proposed by $150,000 each. This is based on, again, looking at the many needs of the cities, of the city, understand, looking at the importance of maintaining streets, also maintaining funding for the parks, split that equally. And then just a little bit looking at the building maintenance levy for where the dollars are needed for future building maintenance. The staff feels there, it could possibly be, take away a little bit of levy dollars there to get under 18%. So you can see from this option compared to the first option, there's a little bit more of an impact on what those levies would be for streets and parks mostly. Staff would like some input, just direction on where we want to go with option one or two, depending on where those levies are, would go. Again, those are just proposed if, depending where the council wants to sit, if they want more taken from the street or more taken from parks, those are items that we would like to discuss.
Can, can you provide some additional color? So one of the, one of the variables in the options is the amount of the capital improvement levy. And option one is a decrease of 50,000, option two is a decrease of 150,000. Can you give some color on potential actual tangible projects that would be impacted by that? Has that been identified to that level?
So for the, for the street portion of the levy, that's your local street project. So this be the number of miles of streets that the city can do in a year. They look at the streets and what needs to be done, set priorities, and whatever funding is provided, they will use to prioritize and improve those streets. The park dedication levy is yet to be determined where, again, matching, these are the needs of the parks, here's the funding that is committed. Now that we know the amount that's committed, where can, which ones now are the priority to get those done? So from that standpoint, it hasn't been project-specific, looking at the park fund.
Just to follow up, I think that, either Dave or Ryan can comment on 50,000 probably isn't a large impact on paving streets. It's a very small amount. Whereas the, the larger number may have just a bigger impact, and I'll leave that to them to kind of translate to the number of miles of reconstruction or mill and overlay that you can do. As far as the parks go, in the second scenario, that's just pushing out maintenance a little bit further. And whether that's replacing playground equipment or fences or whatever the case may be, that pushes park maintenance out a little bit more. The thing you do have to look at, though, is if we do that this year, next year we bounce back up to where we think it still should be. So it's, it's a one-year hiatus in the 10-year plan, so the $50,000 goes back into the main, in scenario, and goes back into the capital. The park money goes back into the park as the plan called for in the 10-year plan.
Important to note specific around the park dedication is traditionally that, or that number last year was 50,000. The original proposal for 2024, based on that park plan, was to bump that to an annual 500,000. And so the adjustment is really to decrease the amount of the proposed increase, if that makes sense, and it's a, more of a stepped approach to that proposed increase, rather than, because I think, you know, if you're looking at this... And so the adjustment is really to decrease the amount of the proposed increase, if that makes sense, and it's a more of a stepped approach to that proposed increase rather than, because I think, you know, if you're looking at this sheet, every year is expected to be five hundred thousand. This move, this would move us from fifty thousand in 2023 down to three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand for 2024, and then moving to five hundred thousand. So it's, it's a slower increase than it is a real, it's not a cut.
It's not a cut, no, it's just, as you correct, it's just a might, a lower increase, and eventually we, we project we still need to get to the five hundred thousand.
Similar, and there's a similar story of feedback on the capital improvement, it's just that it is, the number is, you know, much larger, and so there's...
Yeah.
The proposed number, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Councilmember Erickson, I think I'm speaking over.
No, just a quick question on the park dedication. So are those fees are coming from that new apartment complex? Are those, how are those factored into like this budget projection for the parks?
I'm not sure right now those are projected in, but knowing the park fund the way I do, it won't help all that much, but we can go back and look and see it. I don't think we projected that revenue, did we?
Yeah, I think it was one twenty-six.
It's really hard when you're looking, when you're budgeting this, until it's dirt in the ground and whatnot, we try to level that off as much as, as you can. It's, you know, some years if you, for example, put a fifty thousand dollar budget for park dedication fees, some years you're going to be under, some years you're going to be above it, right? But where, where's that con, that constant median where it's not a consistent source of revenue here now? If we get a large one, a hundred twenty-six thousand for this project coming up, and we get some more projects that come in where we're gaining a lot of many park dedication funds, that's where we're looking at this plan year after year, can we adjust this levy some? But those funds are also tied to new projects. It's not these maintenance types projects for where we're, where we're behind. So yes, those dollars absolutely do help the fund, but there's also a lot of restrictions on how those dollars can be spent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson, just for simplicity, park dedication funds can't be used for maintenance. Clear cut, dry, right? But as we're talking too, we have a subdivision in progress, southwest part of the city right now, that's going to provide park land, but no park improvements. Could use park dedication for some park improvements on that land in the future if that was the decision then.
There's, I mean, there's been a fair amount of park dedication funds received over the last handful of years, correct?
Not as much as you may think. One of, what, what happened, and I forget the year to be quite honest with you, the park, parks needed money, so they borrowed money from, I believe it was the water or the sewer fund or both. So most of the park dedication funds, at least since I've been here, and probably five years before, went to pay off that loan. So there was actually no money for park maintenance or park improvements at that point. And at that point, there were no, until last year, or the year before, I forget, I think it's last year, there was no funds dedicated on the levy for parks at all.
No, I understand that, but I'm thinking like Timber Ridge went up, there had to have been some, I mean, there was a new park over there, correct? I mean, there was some monies that were received that went to pay off Fenway.
Yeah, they, they took out a pretty substantial loan, if I recall, before I got here, but most of the money, the park dedication fund. I think the rule was fifty percent of the park dedication funds had to go to pay the loan off, while the other fifty percent had to, was for new development. And as Ryan said, has to be new development, can't be, cannot be maintenance by statute.
Other points of feedback on this topic, Councilmember Erickson?
So is there a reason that an option wasn't laid out there to cut some of the proposed staff increasing, increases? Is that, staff feels that, that strongly, that, that is not even around the table?
Staff feels that strongly, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it, to be honest with you. I think there's some valid, I mean, they're all valid, but I think that has to be a piece of this, because that is probably the biggest increase of the budget overall, other than maybe the five hundred thousand dollar park dedication. I just think that, that's owed to council at least to see that as a, as an option.
To piece that, to bring that forward, I'm just thinking about level of detail, so looking at kind of impact by position or some level of...
Possibly, I suppose we could pull the numbers ourselves and figure it out, but I just, you know, when you, I just think that's owed to us and the residents.
Interesting. Something we can provide?
Yeah, we can probably, sure.
Unless I'm the only one up here that feels that way.
No, I, I think that transparency of kind of impact to the overall, you know, by position, I think is good, just like we've kind of lined up in the different options here. I think that's helpful. And I draw back, I draw back to that, some of my previous comments on, there are a number of positions that maybe, maybe to help facilitate that conversation around staffing, it'd be helpful to understand, or be helpful to see like times proposed or how long certain positions have been proposed. Like, for example, I think about code enforcement has been, you know, an item on staff's proposed budgets for a number of years, and we just haven't pulled the trigger on it. I think about the community, the CSO position, be helpful to see kind of just impact a levy and then also the kind of number of years it's been on the, the budget consideration list.
I agree, I mean, I'd love to do it all, but I mean, since our last workshop, I've heard loud and clear that twenty-two and a half percent is not even, or even half. So it's, it's a painful conversation.
It is a painful conversation.
Yeah, we're catching plenty of flack for questions.
Correct, and I, I think now is the time where we have the opportunity to do that arm wrestling and to look at the detail and get the right mix that council's comfortable with, and I think we have to, now we have to do that work of what are we, what are we comfortable with and what are the number of scenarios that we need to see. So to that broader point of, we've had a number of weeks for feedback, other things or items for consideration that council would like to kind of have on the table as we consider moving, I mean, we've got one more workshop session and then we will have a vote on proposed levy at the end of September. Is there additional details we want to see broken out as we make those considerations?
I think one of the things that I'd asked for earlier, because there's a lot of bonding issued in the plan, in the ten-year plan, and I understand the reason for that. I was just curious, did we ever get a chance to look at that anticipated debt service ratio? Where we'll go.
Without further direction from council on where they would, where you would like to see, it, it all depends on where this funding is going.
Well, I was just thinking relative to the initial budget projection.
So would you like, so you would like to see the debt ratio for what was originally proposed for 2024 or with one of these options? Or one of the new scenarios that would get proposed at the workshop or all of, all of them? I just want, I just want to make sure I'm clear, just because, you know, a week from now, we're going to have a workshop on the eighteenth, and I will need direction at that point from, why are we going to set that preliminary, preliminary levy at? So that's just where I want to make sure that I'm clear on the expectation of what you're looking for.
I think that if we just use at least the beginning number, you'll have a better idea of what that means. So we'll just use it based on the proposed budget and then...
Yeah, well, I mean, I know, I, I have a sense that past councils have kind of hung their hat on the idea that they paid in cash. I mean, that's been of high value, and we have a low debt service ratio relatively now.
We do.
And we're looking at layering on quite a few bonds, because there's been quite a bit of work that hasn't been done for too long. So I don't think anybody up here is debating the need for it, but I'm just curious where we're headed from a debt service standpoint. Because anybody that's ever been, like, for example, house poor, knows how much that sucks. And I just don't want to put a future council in that position.
Yeah, especially when you consider we're paying six hundred and fifty thousand a year for the YMCA. That's our park money.
Part of it.
And we've got to do that for the next ten years.
But it does give a chance for new residents who are moving in and will be using it, the opportunity to participate.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't help the little, the little neighborhood parks.
Right.
It doesn't help them at all, and lots of those people don't go there.
I agree.
It's just, I'm not arguing about it, I'm just telling you a fact. It's just a fact.
So here, request for some additional detail on debt service ratio. Other kind of requests or things we'd like to see broken out? Options on the table?
So just a question for Ryan, like, the timing on this, and if we're going to cut or keep, keep it where we're at for roads and that, where do you need to be at or where do we need to be at to start getting some numbers and, and putting out for bid and all the rest? Are we coming up tight on that?
I guess from planning of a road project perspective, right now, I mean, without anything new approved, we're basically at a million, but we have some other stuff now that we're being pulled into with the state and county that we need to plan for. So that takes the road funds down more, or if the proposed amount was approved, we get up to one point seven. So that just gives us different directions on how to scope and estimate a project and what field work we should do or not do before snow flies. Because once snow is here, field work gets more expensive, more time consuming, more efforts, and probably Karen can be able to do any wetland delineations if that works to be required. So that's the only things that I'm concerned about, all the design work and planning specs and all that can happen in the winter time, but it's what field work do we need to do so we can do that stuff in the winter time? And that's the direction that's, we've been talking at the staff level, but it all kind of plays out what's here, because Dave has a list of roads. Right now, if nothing new is approved, sorry, Dave, I got to take this or that out, what do you want to take out? You know, that's the bare minimum, that would be cut or not cuts. Do we fit in some other stuff that's been asked of us too? And so we're kind of just sitting and waiting, I guess. And it just doesn't get any cheaper. You know, we provided some examples too, and it's just astonishing to look back. Two thousand twenty-one, we were about sixty-seven dollars a ton. Our contractor this year on our local street improvement project, a hundred and ten dollars a ton. Go back to early two thousands, we were at...
That was from twenty twenty-one?
Twenty-one, we were at sixty-seven-ish.
Wow.
Early two thousand three, we were at twenty-nine dollars a ton. I still remember when we were under thirty dollars a ton. You multiply that out times, basically, we're running about a hundred and ten dollars a foot on those projects with the work that's being completed in there. What you could do back then, what you can do now, it's this night and day difference.
I think just to add on to that is, when you ask, you know, what does that get done if you add seven hundred thousand, what, what more does that get done? It actually probably just gets us back up to probably what we were doing two years ago. We're, have to increase the budget by that much just to get back to what we were getting for footage, you know, or mileage back then. So we're not really increasing the roads, the mileage we're getting done, we're just trying to get back to at least getting, you know, what we were producing in, in twenty-one.
So the one example we did discuss, just to put it in perspective, because we're never going to be able to afford this right now, right? Using a hundred and nine miles of paved roads in the city, approximately around there, times the a hundred and ten dollars a foot, I said, you know, if we only touch the roads once every twenty years and go and do that, that type of work, the pavement maintenance work and maybe some spot curb here and there and storm sewer replacement, it's only touching the roads once every twenty years. No steel coats, no crack filling, none, none of that other stuff. We would be needing to spend about four point one million a year. But we know that's why we're going to have some poorer roads that we're going to have to deal with, but it's just the bulk of them right now, and it's like, we can just throw a dart at the, the map, which one should we do? How do we prioritize it? And, you know, I plan on talking a little more about some County Road Thirty-two items too, because tonight you heard two different things. You heard cut costs and somebody wanted more pet facilities. I'll go into that in more detail later.
Ryan, just to piggyback on your last comment about the twenty-year mark, what is a life expectancy of a road and how old are our roads?
It's like a new road. If we went into designing it, we would do a twenty-year design, and especially a state aid, they would want a twenty-year design. So take the traffic volumes and then, you know, existing soil conditions you start with at the bottom and build up your section, and that's how you'd come up to a twenty-year design. Don't know if our assessment policy specifically says twenty-year in it, a lot of them do. So, you know, if you assess somebody once, you can't assess them within that twenty years again if he had to come in and do some major work. You'd have to go past the cycle of that road that's been established.
That's, that's with zero maintenance? I mean, no top coating?
That's touching the road once every twenty years at a hundred and ten dollars a foot in today's costs. That's just a simple, easy sample, right? If you want a cost per foot, how does it affect the whole city? This is what, but this, this is how it is everywhere, right? It's, everybody needs to be spinning this. What can we budget and can afford? And what level of road ratings are we okay with, you know, living with?
So just to be clear, you, you're saying we, we need over four million, and we're at one point, which being proposed is one point seven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But then there is some good news to that, so you don't go sinking back like that. Remember, our state aid funds are tied up in these cooperative agreement projects. That's another, where we just fall below, we're somewhere around a million, it's, it's changes a lot every year, I can't remember offhand. But once these cooperative agreement projects are done, that's money that we can use on our state aid roads, right? So that will help, you know, like your ma, our major roads that are designated state aid routes, this, that would be another mechanism for funding those projects.
Thank you.
Council, other, I guess, questions related to budget, additional breakout you'd like to see as we kind of continue this arm wrestling match to try to get to consensus for preliminary levy? Again, reminder, you know, the preliminary levy will be asked to pass in September is the cap of what we can do. We can always lower through additional work through the fourth quarter, but we aren't able to go higher. I'm really conflicted on this preliminary levy of just, you know, original proposal was just over twenty-two percent. We've got two options in front of us around, we're at seventeen point almost nine percent and one just under twenty percent. I'm conflicted around, I, I, I think one of our jobs is to illustrate the, just what is the need in the community and what are the gaps and where, and to continue to shine the light on where have we not maintained or not kept pace? I think that from a city perspective, we're in a similar to position to where the school district was prior to their last major bond referendum, where they just had a lot of deferred maintenance and they needed to do a significant bond increase to, our significant bond levy to kind of overcome those projects. And I feel like this is the city's version of that time where our funding mechanisms of the past, both from just being perhaps underfunded as well as just what's happened with cost, is we are sitting in this deficit position. And I appreciate the, the work on bringing that number down to a palatable, more palatable, I'm not sure it's, we're anywhere close to palatable, but more palatable number. But also, I, I think there is a need for some shock factor, because I think there is an expectation of here and we're funding here, and we don't need to cover that gap all in one year. And I think that, you know, between what we ultimately pass, what we might do for preliminary and what we might ultimately be comfortable in passing, I think is perhaps there's some work to do there. But I, I do think we need to, it's our job to continue to illustrate what is the need for the projects. We hear the community wanting, so we can have the conversation on what is that ultimately going to cost? And as painful as this is to see, I'm thankful that we at least have some ideas of a solid ten-year plan of what does an all-in look like so that we can start to have the conversation on, okay, what's our next best step then for 2024? And so, you know, I appreciate the work in trying to get this to as palatable number as possible, but also I think we do need some shock factor, because I think we are in a land where expectations are here and funding is here. And it's just a really tough spot to be. Other perspectives or thoughts on maybe additional details we would want to see yet in, here in September in this round of budget conversation? in September in this round of budget conversation? All right, I'm not hearing any specific requests. Staff, any questions, additional questions of council? All right. I appreciate the work that goes into all of this and appreciate you giving us a couple of good options tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple more pieces of information just with it that I can just touch on quickly just for your reference. The next, on page three, this gives what those tax levy projections were as proposed in August. That's what you would have saw at that meeting. The next page is what that would look like if we went with option one. And as Patrick mentioned before, this one, you can see down here in the equipment certificates, you can see the decrease. This was up like 348,000, now it's 105,000. And then right here on the capital improvement fund, this was proposed in August at 950,000. But then, looking ahead to 2025, we would propose that that's up to 950,000. So then you can see down here, we're under that 20% here in '24, and then in 2025, it's 8.4%. And I'll kind of tie this all together on the last pages so you can see those percentages. And then the same for option two, just looking at 2024 being at that 17.87%. This with the changes, and then with the capital improvement fund, just looking at that, dropping that down to 800,000, but then still proposing that in '25, we get up to a $950,000 range. And then the same with the park dedication fund, drop it to 350,000, but then propose to get that to that $500,000 level in '25. So this just kind of ties those percentages in together, so you can see it all at one point. The main years are this '24 and '25. You can see where, as proposed, is 22.5%, and then in '25, we're looking roughly at 6.6%. And then what the '25 proposed budget could possibly look like if one of those options is chosen to get to that range. You can see '26 through '33, very minimal change. That is strictly due to how we structured that equipment certificate, where there's this really minor changes there. So that's the only change in those years. Where just depending on the direction where we settle in '24 will affect what 2025 will look like. So that's some information there, where hopefully that kind of summarizes where those kind of effects are, as far as if we're looking to get it under 20, down to that 18% range, what those possible impacts could be going into 2025.
I just have a question, and I don't know if anyone in here can answer this, but do we get any indication from the county on what the overall percentage of assessed value of homes are going to jump or stay the same or lower? Because that really is more the number, I think, than this 17% or 22.5% or whatever that affects, that's going to make that number change on people, what their, what their dollars are each year. So is that something that county provides?
The median value increase right now is 2.6%.
And that is, and that's what it will be for next?
That's just the average, so some houses will see higher and some will see lower. That's just the median average number that the county gives out. So when we look at what your, what the levy is proposed at, what the values of houses are doing, that helps determine what that impact of, you know, what's a house value of 400,000, what's that going to be compared to last year? So taking those values. So that's just the dollar value used, where not every house is going to see that 2.6% median increase. Some are higher, some are lower, but that's just the average increase right now.
Any other questions or points of feedback? All right, we can move on to staff updates. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, I don't have any updates this evening.
Okay, Abby?
No updates.
Patrick?
Just a reminder, tomorrow at 2:30 at the site of the new environmental center, there'll be a groundbreaking, you're all invited to go. County will be there. I think it's an exciting project with the county, and that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Okay. Amanda?
No updates, Your Honor.
Dave?
No updates.
Ryan?
No updates.
Chief Peterson?
No updates.
Chief Newman?
No update.
Kevin, you got a bunch.
No updates. I just encourage council, if you think of anything after this meeting that you would like to see this, please shoot me an email or give me a call, and we'd be happy to put any of those together for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberts?
I don't have any updates, just a comment. I think that some of the comments from tonight, specifically the gentleman who has the weed harvester concern, and maybe some emails that we've gotten where we collectively, staff and council, has missed responding to people, I think we need to be better than that. We owe it to the public. It's been challenging at times for communication between myself and staff, where I've had to remind, you know, get it back to the top of the inbox. And so that's concerning if it's happened to a council member, what's the lack of communication back to the, back to the residents? And I think we can all do better on that.
Councilmember Valento?
Nothing from me.
Councilmember Hesnick?
Yes, I attended the EDA meeting tonight before the regular council meeting, and we discussed the Headwaters property that we own, and we also talked about the EDA work plan and several other things. We had updates from the county and so forth. Also, last Wednesday evening, I attended the airport commission meeting, and the main topic of destruction there was a couple of projects that had been approved by the state of Minnesota that we're going to be having, going on out there. And they're funded at 95% from the state of Minnesota. And it's two little short taxiway extensions. One of them is the maintenance on the airport, on the runway and taxiways, it's routine stuff they do about every four years. And there was also some money out for the, looking into the possibility of getting an instrument approach put in there sometime. And it took a study that through the FAA, FFA, FAA, excuse me, FAA. There was one other thing too. Patrick, what was the other third, fourth one?
It's crap filling the two extensions, FAA.
And I think maybe, maybe that was a data set, a separate
Building issue that came up.
So, we've, the airport commission voted to move ahead with those projects, so that'll be, that'll become a forecouncil, so we can move it forward. Okay, that's all I have.
Councilmember Erickson?
No additional update today.
All right, just a quick update for me. I had an opportunity to attend our last Arts in the Park and the community corn feed. Just really a note of appreciation to Jamie M. for organizing a great event. We had a, there was a long line for most of the evening. So thank you to Jamie and staff for organizing, and also to all the community volunteers who made it just such a great event. It was a great capstone, perfect night, great to see everybody. So it was a great way to end a great season of Arts in the Park. I'm not, I haven't seen numbers, but for not record-breaking this year, in overall attendance, we're probably close. There were a lot of really packed evenings, so it's great to see. So, all right, that is the end of our planned agenda this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you.